Yeah.
Pretty in preparation.
A little bit of actual preparation.
You've done against the Chinese.
I have to get rid of that firearm. I don't know why. I have one thing with this way.
You say you've got five to confirm? Four others?
Yes. I'm sure. I think the bar is still going to be on the way. It's nine o'clock. Oh, we're then in the window.
So it's pushing this way? Oh, yeah, James.
James.
Oh. All right. I, I thought the top of my head.
I didn't know. Is it breaking? That's what I do.
Ah, okay, okay.
Which you go around and force me.
I, I can get.
Play.
One second.
Any state.
Any state.
Any. Welcome back. Welcome back. Welcome back. This is new here. You see, you see, you know, you know. I'm not supposed to be so annoyed. We all know it.
It's a matter of.
Where am I going?
Now she's got a spirit. Yeah, for us.
Six, nine, one, three, six.
All right, that's one day. It's really. That's us, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Hi, Ally.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, Ally's time to get a boot right now.
Yeah.
There's nothing to discuss.
I don't know.
We're like six, seventeen here. He's six. I put his respect. I'm usually going to do. That's true. Could you pull? And I think it's something. Kind of. Yeah. That was just weird.
Same right. You never.
This is.
Uh, wait. That's not it.
This is true. Really. Come for the kids. I don't need space. I want to make it possible. You're on the phone.
Or it says he has to go on your. Two seconds.
He's going, those. This guy's. I basically lost you. There.
I know, but.
He didn't want. They won't share. Something. I think nobody's here. See. Something's there. Honestly, I like everybody getting home.
Man, they laughed at the door. It was not. We always laugh.
You know.
I know.
Well, I mean, it's too much. Yeah. I wonder if they think they've got security.
Yeah. Yeah.
Whatever.
Ever tonight. Those orders go right there.
Yeah. Got whole thing. Yeah.
You got something.
All right.
Fun.
And fun and good.
Yeah.
But I play baseball, right?
You're on the ball. You're on the last game?
It'll be fun.
Yeah. You're playing hard.
And, um, I have to have a semifinal.
Oh.
And I was going to have to have a game. The ball is in the air.
It's a big, big town. It's making. Yeah. Yeah. It's warm. Yeah. My first time was working in this script.
Coming second very quickly home.
If they don't want to. Try, try, try. Twenty-two thousand dollars.
Four, 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 right? The guy's sliding.
What's this? Second, I don't know. You're just saying. Always nice, I guess.
I did. Uh, I'm bored. I'm bored. Oh, my gosh. Why these some body?
That was, was it?
Yeah.
Four, two, three.
We got beaten. We have rid of eighteen. We beat the one seed.
If your son's playing, you will.
We beat the one seed. And then on the next night, half of them wasn't there. And then we can play. Get the ball again. Well, and the ball. It's all true. You have a play.
Shows up. It's a, it's a no problem. I'm not even now. It was. You know? It's a blood check. It's a blood check. And.
It's all done.
Nobody's, don't, not, they don't.
Give your douchey your feet. Give your douchey.
I can send the phone key. But you know what? I'm going to send you. You walk in and there are daggers. You're going to get the back and the side.
Exactly what happened.
I never believed it. I didn't have once. It's multiple times. Four more than once.
It is funny.
Have you come on this?
It's a hundred percent. Word for word.
He's here. How, how, how? This is the reality.
It was, it was, it was. He hired me to have a situation.
Oh, that's good.
Charlie did. And we had, we had this whole neighborhood. So they had every seat in this place called. Every seat was taken. Every, every.
Wait, wait. I can, I can. Well, the movie I know. He was here. Oh, look at her. She, she, she. I'm not standing.
I'm going to lay here. I'm out here.
I'm not even a lady. I'm, I'm a lady. It's like. Somebody's here. I know. I told him I said, no problem. Tonight, I'll send you a good white shirt. Please.
Uh, I don't know. But you, last time. It's bad. Yes, that's true. It's bad or true.
Sorry. Now she's, she's, she's.
I didn't hear. One, two, three.
I've done the work. It's never been a fool. Because I'm a lot of money. Crack down the. Just don't be a ponce. I'll apologize.
That's your sleep. And several acts. Yes. Don't be selfish. That's why we need all that. Okay?
No, there was. Oh, uh, first of all. I think I'm. Right here. All in. They just stick. They'll stick in. There's anyone. A lot of the. Generator. You know, I said, uh, my. It's like, oh, we're. I didn't. I, I always. It's like. Why did he? People like that. Maybe he should be. Now, why should we give you? An hour and a half later, they're giving us. Please, now. And then the next meeting is like. That's the.
So that's one.
What, what is it so bad? The rest of the.
But very shallow. Yeah. Cool. Sure. Yeah. I guess, um. And it's coming out of the party. Yes. He's always doing it.
I'm only talking.
All right. I don't know. I don't know. One day, one, two, one is a four member. But it's all. You got the. A lot of right for my.
Contracts.
It's a lot of. No.
Simple, simple. You're a vice.
I'm. Contact.
They got the. I think you actually. You got time.
Um. Who else?
This is not a.
We're sorry. I thought.
It was very important. It was how. I, I just put a thought. When we got. And it was another scenario. We were. You're acting this way.
Sorry. I asked. We said, yes, because they were.
Oh, yes. It's wasn't ever. Let's get it. But it's back. Nothing.
All the people who are surprised, sold the. But I suppose we get to much of the fact. I know it's in America. They do a problem. For example, one nation under God. There's a difficult. Three. Have you read it? Was I reading it?
I'll read it.
Okay.
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the board in the office of the township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive evidence of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the public.
Thank you. Uncle.
Very. Uh. Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable, Mr. Plansby.
Here.
Mr. Herzen.
Here.
Mr. Rind. Mr. Ossikson, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Raisin.
Here.
Mr. Menachron, Mayor Paulson.
Okay, thank you. I'd rather.
I still rather have Alan.
Yeah.
Second version.
I mean, if you want to have a statement.
I. It's not the. Everything. They swear you're professionals.
Sure. That's why I give you. Your call. And I'm.
Yes. And we're skipping the closed session right now.
Okay.
Yes, um, uh, and, and since we do not have a lot of. I, I don't. Mr. Stern, you know, there was a, and as you would call it, was an issue of whether we got this looking back person to prepare for it. Pretty good.
Sure.
Uh, whether that person had to appear. Michelle Donato had requested, um, that the, uh, that that person be produced. Uh, Mr. Schneider said, said no. And my thought was that that was a submission requirement. Just like if you have to do a tree saver report, that doesn't mean you have to bring your arborist in to talk about, you know, what trees they've ripened around. Um, and, and of course, this is a little different. I, I see it as a submission. I mean, not necessarily something the applicant has to do. An applicant could call a planner or not call a planner. They could call an engineer. They could call a traffic expert, et cetera, depending on how they want to make their case. And the board can draw whatever inferences it wants from what witnesses are called and what witnesses aren't called, just like in any other judicial matter. So I, I, I called Michelle Donato today. I saw this was on the calendar for tonight. And, um, of course, Ally prompted me. That's the only reason I did it. Um, and, and I, I was on the phone with Mr. Schneider and Miss Donato. And I asked her whether she had prepared a memorandum like I had asked her. And her response to me was, no, I'm not doing it. I'm not going to use my client's resources to give you justification why, uh, they should be required to produce that witness. And, um, you know, I, I think the board can take that into account. I think you can infer from that that she has no authority for the proposition that she is entitled to, um, have that witness called. And, 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 and I, I don't think the board can decide this issue tonight because we don't have a quorum. I'm just telling you what happened today. I think we should put this off, this decision off until the next hearing. But my recommendation is going to be that, um, that, that it's up to the applicant whether they want to produce that witness or not.
John, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Through, through the chair. Start. Um. If, if there's.
This is, this is, by the way, not part of the official meeting.
Right.
Why don't you step down for this just to?
If, if there's no, if there's no basis to call, to call the, uh, the, uh, whatever, prepare the fiscal impact study. Can't that, can't that be decided on administrative level, just with your opinion and with the board administrator? Because.
It, it, it's the, the MLUL vests in the chairman the authority to make certain decisions as far as evidence, proceedings, what witnesses to call, what not to call. It says that the chair can make that, that decision. I think it's a good practice, though, to get the consent of the board.
Well, I'm just saying, well, because, because we don't have a quorum. The planning board, you know, requires one zone board member. And apparently it's not here tonight, so that we, I don't know if anybody notified or not. But can the chairman make that call through the, and then?
I, I think so. Probably the. I think, I think you can, yes.
Yeah, so the chairman can make that call and make it good administratively, I think, because the way through the next meeting, it's at, it's at the end of August. It's summer. I don't know if we'll have a quorum either for that meeting.
Well, why don't we do this? I'll have a conversation with, uh, Mr. Stern during the week, and he can send an email to the board secretary, put his decision as on that. We won't do it here because I, I really don't want.
I understand.
I have a quorum and we can't discuss this.
John, is there any way we can check the record from last time? Because I'm ninety percent sure that we left it, that she was going to produce or not produce her memo, that you and I are going to talk, and then I was going to make the decision. We were not bringing it back to the full board, so therefore we don't need a quorum.
That, that, I, I don't remember that vividly. But I, I think that Mr. Plansby was correct. And I think that the chairman can make a decision on what parties, how long, you know, who gets called, who doesn't get called as a witness.
Okay, so you and I will side for it, actually.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And the record will reflect. We're not going to do that in a closed session. So I'll be kind of like a closed session, but I hope. That's, that's, that's not a closed session type of.
But, 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 Mr. Hines. Sure.
And the board has great being. I call it being back to order.
Meeting, meeting is all back to order. And, uh, I, I think we'll, we'll push all the correspondence. We'll go to public character. Correspondence?
Yes, there is a, a, a request by bias, Rika, to, um, get a coverage variance to a previously approved major subdivision. I understand that the applicant has noticed. Is that correct, Mr. Pepper? Published in the paper. It's a property owner, so I don't have an issue doing this on correspondence. One thing I have asked Mr. Pepper to address, and I provided him with the resolutions. I understand that there was a, an application that was denied, and then the applicant modified their, uh, case. It came back and they were approved. So I asked Mr. Pepper to make certain he, you know, points out to the board how this is not something that we decided. And how it's different than that first case in what we're looking for now. And, and, and. Otherwise, it might be a restitution package. So please address that.
Please, Mr. Chairman. I'll double say. Jerry, yeah, one second. Someone. Jerry, do you have anything?
Not at this point, Chairman. Uh, I need to hear testimony as to what are they requesting in terms of coverage for how to be lots one percent versus what the zone standard is. We don't have anything on that.
Okay. Uh, maybe. It's a complex. It's, it's very straightforward. The original application they came in, and no less than four variances came before the board. We got nine. They have to go back to the joint board came in and fully reforming the application. Uh, that's been approved. They actually got the real supplies. The maps are ready to be filed. Uh, they're, this is for a, a triplex, a duplex. Um, they are ready to go forward with it. And there's some end users came back and asked if they could modify the units a little bit. Uh, we're now asking to go from a lot covered variance. There was open variance before. It's thirty percent. Um, and we're asking to go to thirty-five percent. Um, just makes the house a little bit larger. It's for the end users who are asking.
Did you originally?
Because we, we actually, I went back because it's not anything that we, you know, resolution. So first of all, we, uh, we significantly determined we came from a four or five variances to fully conform. That actually got an actual lot coverage. We're asking for thirty point eight. I'm actually asking now for thirty-five percent. Um, not to, not going back to what was after before. Uh, so it's a totally different application that was before the board acted, uh, and what was approved. And I, I get indicated that I don't believe it's a restitution package issue also because we're coming in amended, approved resolution. I'm not coming in based upon this, it's the same application that was, that was proposed. I would agree if I came and go for five of these applications, four of these variances that we, um, that were denied. It's a different story. Here, I'm asking for any side. That application had rear yard setback varies, building coverage varies, rear yard setback varies, side yard setback varies. Um, we're not, we're asking for the lot coverage because the end users are asking for the house to be a little bit different. Um, shapes will be longer space. That's the only difference. Everything else is, is the same.
So you're getting your, uh, while the building coverage is going up, it doesn't trigger any side door.
No.
Frank or your setbacks. You're within all setbacks.
Not, not all of it. So one, just because it's one duplex and one triple. Just one duplex.
What percentage are you going from?
Thirty to thirty-five.
Thirty to thirty-five.
And that's. Four variances. That's originally thirty-four days, right? Thirty-four days. So we're on plus thirty-four days.
It doesn't affect any.
No, this, this does not create any other variances, no other changes to the plans. And the back, the trip likes. That's the end of the change. And again, we did notice, uh, as indicated, you know, here, there's no, here's application. Um, objecting, if obviously when we did the initial application, there was some, some issues. We worked all those out.
You're making all the houses.
Actually, one duplex.
One duplex. You make a little bit here.
It's just, it's a duplex and it's a triple. That's all it's on, on this, uh, application.
Chairman, is there a professional planner in the audience who may put some, some, some very brief testimony?
Yes.
Justifying variance.
If I can, I'm sure Mr. Planner.
Okay. You see how you are. He's like the public planner.
Just double my.
He looks very.
His word from testimony gave me further support of the truth. All true.
I do. Brian Lanner, Dax, New Jersey licensed professional, and chairman professional planner. This property is in a deed for zone. It's approved and, and deed for zone is normally thirty percent. Uh, both duplexes, the coverage is thirty-five percent. Uh, so this, this would be typical of what other zones are. Uh, and it's a classic C two variance where we have to show that it's a specific property. It's very specific. And that it's going to prove that location that the end user wants. We have to show that it complies with the, uh, the national plan and the housing management plan. It's consistent with other zones. We do like this. And so that, that way, that's why there is no detriment to this. Nobody's really going to know. So the end users will be satisfied. And, and other than that, they're, they're quite in the board to help the end user.
You agree, Jerry?
I believe that that's coaching testimony. The, the board has to decide what they agree with, certify, or just conclusion.
Have to remember Coach up there.
Coaching, you're here in Coach.
No more, no more traffic. The aesthetics, I think, will actually be nicer because the homes, the homes will be modified to be nicer for the owners. Uh, the, the only impact is that it covers a little bit more of the lot. But that's consistent with what coverage is typically provided for, uh, duplexes.
Mr. Flanery, you were clear, logical, convincing. You were coaching.
There's another couple.
I have you, Mr. Chair.
To the chair. Is it a, a design change or is it just larger everything that was there before?
Well, there's no size. You just. How long?
It's larger with, I mean, well, the dimensions are proportionally larger.
It's going with all the.
It's going to fit in the, the existing building.
Correct. Nice. Mr. Jackson, do you feel comfortable with the, or you might deny it or?
Well, the, the different applications. I think this question, the question asked, we, this is a different. I think.
So it did ask for every.
Again, it's just a matter of. Just a matter of. I think it's up to the board. It's not legal issue. Actual issue.
Yeah, I'd like to just to talk about the procedural history. There was a standalone application that was denied. We came back. The restitution issue was addressed at that dock. We could not have deferred our actual application that was approved if we had come in with restitution. So that's in, that's approved. Rest of the one change. Um, we'd come in on the option. We've known that these buyers wanted this house come this way. We would have come in with that one back as soon as the board reached. Okay.
Any questions for any more members? So now we're closed. Republic, never to public like to be heard on this application. So now we're closed. The public. I would ask for motion of this application.
I'm making motion.
Say.
Mr. Murray, move. Mr. Plansby, set the roll call, please. Are you, Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Plansby?
Yes.
Mr. Raisin?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Rinder, step down. Uh, Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
And Mr. Raisin?
The highlight of this, if I wasn't part of the original, uh.
Yes.
Okay, then the, yes.
I agree. Thank you. I'm above the area. Any changes to the gentleman?
Not down the way. Number one.
First application, it is important by I-4, mine subdivision, uh, not against D-2396. The R-4 varies, is chairman of the food book.
Okay.
Uh, first under submission waivers, um, special waivers that requested with regard to the submission to, which account planning board. We can support the waiver for hearing purposes with the understanding that the planning board is going to have to do the...
You have a motion, a little more with issues of condition over?
Second.
Second, on the table on, that number seventy, Paris tree, tree leave, and close middle, front yard setback from Route nine. Uh, front yard setback ranges for lots twenty-five to twenty-six. Um, I believe that's all the reasons for each other.
Good news, Jim, uh, Vepfer, Jim, I have the application. Do I have the candidates who want our, our exhibit seat? I think we have certain, uh, present, uh, that's one we can report.
I do. Brian Lanner, Daxton, Jersey licensed professional, and an air professional planner. I have two, A1 is the cutting of the minor subdivision map. I did, I flipped it over so that it was oriented the same as the tax, not which is A2. We have, uh, three existing lots there with existing structures on them. Uh, we're going to replace them with duplexes on, uh, conforming lots. The variances that are mentioned are the existing setback variances, so we're not increasing any of the setbacks beyond what's there today. Uh, looking, uh, the, the one thing I should mention is it was a neighbor that was here, uh, that had last meetings, they, they couldn't be here again, they met with him. Uh, and, uh, he has two requests and the applicant is okay with them. Oddly, oddly, the board has to make a determination that they impere with, um, uh, his regulations. But the, the applicant is happy to amend the application to accommodate that if the board agrees, that's what I did.
Right, the front yard setbacks to Route nine?
Yes.
And you have to decide...
The desired typical section is, uh, is not being served. And you, the third setback, they won't, uh, set on the, uh, side street. Uh, the, I don't know, hangout street and, uh, adversity, the, uh, the access to the side streets. No, that's not, no, it's not.
Oh, it's technically a sign.
Yes, technically, nobody considers it a problem.
There's no, nothing's fronting there.
Correct. Nobody's fronting there, uh, but we, the front yard setback is required from Route nine. It's larger than, uh, other front yard setbacks. But the, the bottom line is, the existing front yard setback of the existing buildings, Route nine is will be held. And then all the development occurs, uh, to the west of it. Uh, so the neighbors were request, uh, on Berch treaty, wants the driveways to be three cars wide. You can see we've shown the double stack, two of each driveway. He would rather have the three cars wide and, and, and the reasoning for that is so that, uh, it limits the on-street parking. By providing enough parking space on the site, eliminating the art on-street parking, there's more room on the street for the, the vehicles to move. Uh, he would also like, uh, the curb area on Route nine, uh, uh, the area from Route nine to the first driveway to be designated as no parking area. Now, you know, the board can't do that, but we would agree as a condition to request from the township that, uh, that area be designated as a no parking area.
Technically, you were asking, like, do I do one?
Yes.
So you lose parking on the street?
Yes.
We're taking all the street and putting it on others.
Yes, yeah, yes. And, and that's the neighbor's request. And, and the applicant, uh, did read with the neighbor that he would request that of the board. And the, the board makes a decision of one way or the other. So, uh, if, if, if you agree with them and, and the logic to me makes a lot of sense, I, I've seen on other streets in Lakewood. Where it, it turns out better if you don't have car parking on the street and don't need to. Since we're providing adequate parking. And the other thing that'll occur here is there are more bedrooms, that is, the four bed, four parking spaces required. So if we could, we can double stack three, uh, with, that, that's our request. So getting back to the...
Quick question, Chairman, like, what is what you just cited in terms of what your vote and on the application? Can you get a copy right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. You know, the, the, the...
So, yes, uh, so, uh, quoted Terry's report on page three of the zoning, it indicates that, uh, the duplexes are permitted on eighty-five hundred square foot lots. Uh, our average lot size is ten thousand square feet, or see, it was required. We have, uh, one at eighty-five oh five, uh, and the other, other two are nine thousand seven hundred fifteen, eleven thousand seven hundred forty-five. So, so these are larger, uh, duplex lots than required. But you ordered, uh, having complete supply with the, with the variants that are requested are in item two. And it's the existing front yard setback, uh, of, uh, thirty-three point five feet for lot twenty-two oh four. And, uh, twenty-nine point eight feet for lot twenty-two oh five. As I testified, those are the existing setbacks. Seventy-five is required. Those who are buildings exist today, all Route nine, the, uh, the setback that, uh, stipulated by the ordinance is seventy-five. But the older development has, is typically been closer than that. So we're not going to get any closer to Route nine than it is today. My opinion based on that, would be that it's not really a variant, because the ordinance, uh, under the, uh, the section of existing non-informities indicates that if, if you have an existing setback, you can build on that lot. And always respect that, don't make any work, and we don't make any work. But again, when Terry says we need variants, I'm going to give you testimony to justify that variant. But my opinion is that no variants is actually needed.
Um, what would happen if, one day, if I happens and they want it?
Well, what, Route nine has a, the state has given a desired critical section, uh, and, and their desired critical section, uh, is, uh, to match them with the, they think they need uh, for, uh, Route nine in the future. Uh, and the desired typical section is shown on the plan, and we, we respect that desired typical section. Typically what's done on Route nine, so that nobody builds anything in that desired typical section. So that, uh, someday, in, in my grandchildren's life, when the DFP finally gets around to treating Lakewood properly, there'll be enough right away there, uh, in order for them to do what they need.
Your side walk as well?
Yes, that's a fact, that's a fact that we have received by your...
Yes.
And your part is that...
The old stair. The old stair, those stairs are not, those are existing stairs, yes. And the existing stairs, the existing stairs are retaking.
Uh, if you, if you look at, all right, here, the stairs could have...
Yeah, I, I, I think it's existing, just that they're...
Yes, yes.
It just exists for the whole...
And it's not, and I don't, you can't think of that.
Right. And, and everything that's underneath is the, uh... Those are existing.
Those are all?
Yes, yes. All, all the, the, uh, sort of faded, uh, lines that are on there are the existing. On a minor subdivision, typically what you do is you take a survey map and then you draw your line on it. Survey maps by law are required to show all the existing features and service things. So that, that's all on there. Makes it a little confusing, which is why I, I did the outline of the property in orange. The pink lines are the new lines, and the blue lines are the new, uh, duplexes.
That's exactly it.
Okay.
What do you see on the map of the desired, uh, which one?
It's the dash line.
The house is wide here. Very hard consideration, just before the...
It, it, it's usually like twenty-seven feet from the right away line. The, uh, the, uh, the desired typical section, I think it's a hundred and fifteen feet wide, both sides. They, they can't do that, uh, line is your, uh, existing right of my line. But, but that is the line that's indicated right on the subdivision.
Should they ever build?
Should they ever build, they have the...
Like, you're closed on the house.
No, no, that desired typical section leaves room on the side of the road there. It would, it would still leave a, a normal side yard setback. Uh, and, and the, the curving and the sidewalk and, and, uh, a, a grass strip on the side of that. But, uh, the, there was a report that was submitted from the, uh, consultant of the DOT that indicates that they could do a four-lane section in substantially less time. Because the DOT's whole reason why they have widened it is because they have to go through and take this desired typical section of a hundred and fifteen feet all the way through. They can do it ninety. So they can save all that room from ninety and still put that road through. But it's politics, so some, some engineer, and I worked for the DOT years ago, so I liked people. But some engineer looked at a book and opened it up and said a hundred and fifteen. You could do the road you need in ninety. Uh, and so if it's done in ninety, that leaves even more room for the house. I, I have, uh...
Your confidence, the maximum...
Yes, yes. And, and, and I'm sure that my grandchildren's children, when they go by and they see that their dad, their, their great-grandfather did this, they're not going to say, what kind of a fuss was it? They're just going to say, oh, yeah, he left plenty of room.
Well, it's one of the why? Mr. Vepfer, Garfield's raising his hand.
I have a question.
The state now is announcing simple plans. Why do you become five seventy-one, you know, two seconds?
Yes.
This is the form that we're using.
One hundred percent. The, the, why they're doing is only intersection. They already taken any of the area they need for that. They, they were, I don't think we wound up on this, this POC, because they treated Lakewood like a stepchild. Since nineteen, when, when Mr. Franklin was here, he always wound up, I never had.
And why didn't it go?
Yes.
But some section, a lot of the...
In, in intersection, there's a good white, which will help us pass.
Uh, one of these control, uh, building.
Yes, yes, yes. And, and all of that is discounted, and this more than a ton.
No driveways coming out of the car.
Exactly.
Well, they're like...
Correct. We're eliminating two current driveways coming out on Route nine.
Where on the map is the print house right now, on that map?
What's the...
A little blue.
The blue right here.
That building, shape is going to be made?
No, this is a footprint, it's a shaded area.
This is coming down.
That's coming down. The blue, this will be the new footprint of the...
It's all one-way structure?
It's going to be a duplex. It's going to be one duplex.
With the print house ends now, facing river, right? Is that going to end at the same spot? Is that...
Yes, yes.
That spot is going to be the same?
Yes, yep. Uh, let, let me put on record, uh, uh, the, the justification for it.
Mr. Turk, I just have some questions to understand. So right now, we have two houses and a print shop.
Yes.
And we're going to go to six units?
Yes.
And are they, that's a single family dwelling, or is a basement also here?
Uh, we're, we're not asking for basements, but the basements will be the same as everybody's basement. That they would be allowed to, uh, have a, a basement apartment.
So we could have twelve families living here where we have two now?
Yes.
Off of Route nine?
Yes, but they, they're on side streets.
I know, but they're going to do what everybody else does, which is they're going to take the lefts, or they're trying to longcoming traffic. When they're coming home, they're going to take a left and try, and you have the firehouse one block down. So of all the places where I don't think, we, we have the same thing with, uh, the Lakewood shop. Beautiful building, but is this the place we passed in? Huh? Oh, the voice, sorry, 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 the voice.
You don't have to apologize. No, I also...
Twelve words is currently the same. The existing house, what, clarify. We have one. Twelve words. This one, and first one and the second one? Mr. Star, that asks you basically, did they come to fully conforming application, signs, and variants, consistent, right?
Correct. We, we are defending that this is a fully conforming application. Most areas, 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 you assert, you put the testimony on why, which, why, or just what justification there is. I admit your concern about Route nine. So just to reiterate, so there are two curbs that's existing that are on, on Route nine, and those are being lifted. Now you have this, and all these houses are coming out at the print shop, the building, and they also built with, with the shop, which was a commercial structure. You had parking issues.
Sorry, I jumped right in. They were coming right on Route nine. You, you can see here that both Berch and Henry have options to, to go to the county road, where the county does like Lakewood, the county's white. So they, they both have the option to get there differently. Uh, and, and again, that indicates the, the density is, is important with the, the master plan and the... Uh, and, and the master plan does indicate that we need housing opportunities, so people can move to Lakewood. Uh, the, you can imagine having houses within two hundred feet. And we did have one neighbor, and all he wanted to do was say, please make this nicer for Berch Street, so that, uh, the residents can...
The affect, the, uh, size, and part of the, that is, um, for...
Yeah, it's a, it's a, like, a white, by the fence, just a, for lockout. That's like saving for everybody.
So, 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 turn, Mr. Vepfer's saying it's conforming, but maybe you're saying it's not?
What, I, I, I think it's a privilege if you read, under zone, the part letter. You note that setbacks are variant, including, however, you're also noting that the existing print house and great places, river, after, which, if you remove, are located on the same setbacks. I've heard phrases differently in other towns past, reaffirming existing variants.
More accurate.
Correct. I believe, just, uh, two or three meetings ago, the same issue came out, and he raised questions.
That's a grandfather.
We've, we've played grandfathering, uh, in US levels, normal, such that other towns do have it. But yes, so we're working off of all the existing, uh, setbacks. We're not increasing anything, so while there's a variant, um, noted, we're getting back and off of the UDLs allows for us to do that without increasing any, any variants, and it isn't how it is still by now.
So slightly differently, you're, those, uh, would need help at existing hundred forty setbacks.
Yes, yes.
And even those being destroyed, demolished, which usually would extinguish the pre-existing right in Lakewood, for some reason, were an outlier, and we allow that non-conforming use to continue, even though the previous, well, has been demolished.
That's, that's correct. The governing body, uh, I believe it was in two thousand and seven, uh, added that provision to the ordinance, because they felt it made more sense to allow people, uh, to, uh, improve their properties, uh, and not have to. In some of the other towns, they play a game where they leave part of the building up. And they extend it. Lakewood decided they, they didn't want people playing. And again, the governing body made the decision and put that language in the ordinance. So the, uh, justification for the variances that I don't think we need, but are in Terry's report, uh, master plan, uh, two thousand and seventeen, on page two, that's background information. On page three, they conclude, based on this information, it's important Lakewood plan for residential development to houses growing population. The vision statement, uh, on page seven says, encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth plan principles. It's my testimony to this subject. On, uh, page nine, housing strategies, uh, provide housing opportunities for all groups, family size, and, and income levels. Uh, and I think, I think that's something you get to find in the master plan. The municipal land use law into AC forty-four, fifty-five, D two, under the purpose of the act, encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Uh, and he is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations and contribute to the well-being of persons, neighbors, communities, regions, and preservation of environment. These are C2 variances, where we need to show that benefits substantially outweigh the detriment. We have to show relates to the piece of property. I, I think this piece of property is clearly unique. Uh, the purpose of the municipal land use law, which I just read, will be advanced. Uh, the variants can be granted without any detriment, it's all good. Uh, and I, I think that's certainly documented by the fact that we're here, we're meeting everybody within two hundred feet with no debate. Uh, and, and somebody in the public thought it wasn't good, they would be here to object. The variants will not inherit the intent, purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and my testimony is that it, it applied. And, and four is that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriment. And it's my testimony we do that. With respect to the, uh, remaining items in the report, number fourteen. Uh, we would, we would agree, and, and we discussed this when we had the tech meeting. We would agree to, uh, uh, comply and make repairs of D-12, thirteen, and fourteen in accordance with the ordinance and as directed by the township engineer. So the township engineer says some curving is, is bad, something needs to be done. Uh, the... Well, it, it typically, what's done now is in, in ordinance that says if you disturb something, you do so much. And then there's formulas on what you do and how much you pay. And, and we would comply with the ordinance on that. And the ordinance is as interpreted by the board engineer. Okay.
We're fine with that.
Okay. Uh, uh, and nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, we, again, we would do, uh, we would comply, uh, to the, uh, the ordinance and, uh, the direction of the, the township engineer. Uh, the landscaping comments, uh, the different species, because whether the wires will, will change, which we, and request by the, uh, the shape revision. Thank you.
Yeah. The increasingly covered people have this, on this problem. Where, where do I see an area of, of objects on the street?
But all of these units have access to the street from their rear yard. So the trash cans are, are put in the back, and they roll them out to the curb, uh, garbage truck.
And you put the company, uh, of the garbage.
Where there's, there's no requirement to do that, when some, somebody's buying these, and, and the applicant...
I just wrote in the report.
The, the report says if there is a fair, we have to give you an email. So when they do their plot plan, uh, they will give the, the, or any of the details needed with respect to that.
My problem with roll up cans, you have a white wire, you roll up the cans, cars can't come in, you can't, things with garbage, where you're parking, there's traffic.
And, and the, the residents have to anticipate the garbage schedule, and it's, it's the same on every street in Lakewood, I, I understand. I, I've driven through all the streets in Lakewood and...
The other side of the road, we have, there's two ways, uh, the car park rate is front, the rear yard park is the place to park you. We should, we should, the, the homeowner has wanted to be able to park in consite, first, first, the whole side of the street, so that it wouldn't be, uh, blocked.
And outside is where the march, it's where my dad, the marshal, walks.
Yes, so the inside. That, that, that is what, that is what the neighbor put us on.
Yeah.
Any other questions, any more members?
Sign on, obviously. Also, can the public hear this application, please, before, seeing on, we're closing the public, as for motion of the application?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve this application with that there can't be any curbs on Route nine. Uh, there has some fencing on, throughout the whole, Route nine side, along the curving sidewalk. Um, the curbs on Berch have the white wire up there, three, uh, three cars. Um, no parking from the corner, and... And Henry Street, Henry Street needs its proper, uh... Needs its proper, uh, fencing.
Okay, do we, we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Plasman, say, why made a motion?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mr. Garfield.
Mr. Sheriff?
Yes.
Mr. Plasman?
Yes.
Mr. Hurts?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
And Mr. Raisel?
Yes.
Thank you. John, just had, we, we also want to just have some, um, questions, uh, over the, the, and the...
I'm asking the board members, Ally asked me, she's not here today, she's followed the plans. She always doesn't have to, she stays, there's nothing to do today.
You're on, you're on, everybody.
Okay, next. My citation of this one is, you ask me, two, three, three, nine, AA, supplement, social change use for Cal, A, or...
Yeah. And no, any type of, um, figure.
Looking at, um, the application, turn, um, we have design papers, no, you can give back on, once you hear the application. Uh, under zoning, again, similar to that application, we have pre-existing conditions, which...
the, uh, side to side, aggregate side to side, which, uh, and, uh, finally, when new variance is for a curb above the, uh, it's all the necessary.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Mary Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Kalan Patoro. This application is for a change of use, site plan exemption, to convert an existing home located at eight twenty eight Ridge Avenue into a shule. The shule has a main sanctuary of seven hundred ninety-six square feet, hence, there is no parking requirement, since, uh, since the main sanctuary is under eight hundred square feet. However, the applicant wants to do what the board likes them to do, and is certainly willing to provide, um, a gravel parking lot with eighteen, we can get eighteen parking spaces on that parking lot, just so that the board should, you certainly should feel comfortable that there is, um, parking, even if there's no parking requirement, so we're going to above and beyond here.
I can assess on the chairman, if, uh, part of the lot, uh, is not made, uh, it's not made, it's not, it's not, even though they, that could be only, parking, they're required.
So then we make a request, that the board approve this one?
Okay.
So then, Harry, we would, we'd like to make the request for that, for that design waiver.
I, I think, uh, we do need a parking, thank you for bringing it, it's a dangerous area, I'm very happy to sit here and make the calls, thank you very much.
You're welcome, on behalf of the applicant, and just I would make the request that the board plant that design waivers, but the gravel, obviously, this is, this is still a temporary solution for this shule, and therefore, it's not going to make sense for them to leave the parking at this time.
Would it be set parking if it's a gravel, like, say, eighteen spots, how would that be organized?
Well, well, we give the testimony, I'm, I'm going to let Brian address that.
Saying if it's gravel, that's what I'm saying.
They, I, the engineers office measured it out, and they, they said they can fit eighteen, they can fit eighteen cars.
You can fit it, but there's no set way.
I mean, it's not going to be striped, but it's not going to be any different than almost.
You're not putting up codes, you're not putting up anything to designate spots.
I, I, I'm.
We give them a big lesson, I'm trying to clarify.
I, I don't know how we can do it, but it's the same way all the shuls that park right now on dirt, you know, when, when, when there's like dirt in the, in the, on the front.
It's not ideal, I'm saying, we understand it's not ideal.
We know it's not ideal, that's why I pointed out, the reason it's not ideal is this is the, uh, relatively fledgling shule, I mean, it's, it's an existing shule, but it's, it's relatively fledgling, and this is a temporary solu, solution for them at this point in time. This is not.
Maybe to a different location, is that what you're saying?
Perhaps, or they're going to build something bigger on this location, but this is only, this is just a change of use to convert an existing home, for a temporary solution for the shule to have a way to pray.
I have to go out, you have plenty of room, on this property, that's probably.
Right, there's also, we do, I think, I didn't believe there was a letter that was submitted to the board members, it wasn't, oh, I thought it was, okay, so, yes, we do, we do have a letter, which we will, um, which we have copies, I think we'll, we'll submit to the board members, but, uh, we do have a letter from a neighbor, uh, which we can mark into evidence, which just, which is from a neighbor who advises that he owns a number of properties along Ridge Avenue, and among them, he owns the lot with the address of eight twenty Ridge Avenue, and there are approximately ten parking spaces on this lot that he would allow to be used for overflow parking for the proposed shule, with the address of eight twenty eight Ridge Avenue, so we can.
How many members are in the shule right now?
He's not sworn, so, you know, I, I guess, I guess we should, John, if we can have arms sworn at this point.
Sure, if I'm personally getting both of the members. I do, I'm a culinary bag, some Jersey license, professional engineer, professional planner, uh, as Mary indicates, this is an application to convert an existing building to a shule, and parking required is zero, we're proposing eighteen parking spaces that are available with the gravel, for, for waiver, uh, that have gravel, other parking spaces that are not required. Uh, the, there is a report, it indicates the, uh, the setback variance, which are existing variance, again, it would be my testimony that the, the variances are not needed, because it's an existing structure, uh, number two on the list, is a rear setback, it's nine point nine eighty, which twenty feet is required, again, existing, for the existing building, side there are variance, nine point eight four is proposed, where ten is required, again, the existing condition, aggregate side setbacks, nineteen point nine seventy feet for twenty five is required, the existing condition, uh, uh, further buffer, uh, really, uh, twenty feet, uh, or nine point eight four buffer, indeed, and ten point three buffer, but, again, existing building in the neighborhood, for a neighborhood shule, uh, with respect to this question about, you know, that's, it is, it is a neighborhood shule, they're, they're all, the neighbors that'll be coming here, they, they're familiar with the, uh, situation, and, and they'll know how to park as soon as they do have the, uh, the other town, which we will address with respect to the variances, is that, again, I, I don't think we need, but if we did need, I think it would justify the master plan of two thousand and seventeen, on the eight seven position, statement, encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth plan principles, and my testimony to this subject, it provides a house for, which is, and in every residential use, in the neighborhood, the needs, so that the shule can, can have a place, uh, and, and hold the, the, you know, the congregation that has to come back, this, or, the, uh, for appropriation, the, 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 this plan is, and, and, uh, the, 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 uh, the Act, this is encouraged, and reflects, guide the appropriate use and development of all land in the state, which will make, uh, the public health, safety, and, uh, I marked A one and A two, A two is, is the, uh, the, the show, this property is on the south side of the J Avenue, uh, sort of adjacent, and, and, and A one show, have the, uh, the, the part.
I'm not sure if you're very fast, it would be, like, perfect, okay.
The further buffer relief, it's my testimony that, uh, the, the existing condition, that we're not proposing to buffer, but it's, we join residency, rather than, uh, 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 if you're, they know, if it was, uh, in a position, uh, I, I think they'll come here and tell you, I don't anticipate that, but it's my testimony that, uh, the, what's existing, it's appropriate, and it applies to the intensity, where this, this one, uh, uh, the one side is, uh, nine point eight, what, and the other side is ten one hundred? And what's kind of, what's happened? We have a house in some form. The house is going to stay.
It's not essential.
So, if you look at Google Maps, there's about eight cars parked there, um, so, they're going to, what they, and then, what's there now, there's like an old army truck, and a dump truck, what's there now, it's like a store, it's big for somebody, or?
I don't know what that's from.
Is there also a parking lot?
No, there's no room.
But, and, and, as, as you can see, all the, 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 the building in back, the building in back, it was, it was under him, so he, uh, gave a little park in, under, but.
The existing level is residential development.
Yeah.
You have an asshole driveway, right?
But if the, the driveway that currently hurts the residential quality, saying, as in, we have eighteen, um, on the driveway, you should, for, 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 but if the, if the, the residential quality is way dead, and then, why the?
Yeah, but I think, I think the chairman's question was, but is there room for, for parking there, which I think the answer is yes.
For the residential?
Well, even though the residential, that rest, that small house may not use four parking spaces, so actually, that may give you all the floor parking for the shule.
Right, and you're a listener, only you was.
The parking for residents?
Well, it's, it's how many cars in there, how many cars do you think are parking in that back?
Residential residents, uh, residents, that have second primary, that, that, uh.
It means a residence, but it's a small.
The house, that's all.
The house.
And that would provide four option parks.
Well, but it doesn't have a basement apartment, it's, so it's really two parking spaces, that's, that was my point, that you probably have two more.
That's just saying what this is supposed to say.
No, no, a hundred percent, it's, it's a house.
Hold, hold on, hold on a minute, please wait until Justin speaks, finish speaking.
If there's no basement, so like you want, this is, this is.
You, you've done already?
I mean, if you have room in, uh, asshole.
No, there's.
I think smart designated should be designated for residential, which is okay.
What's the proposed warehouse?
There is no warehouse.
Any of the area that's not being used by this shule will be stored.
Stored by who?
You understand, sorry.
Will there be anything here other than a shule?
The other area will be stored, the owner of that property will store it.
Store it for his business? Well, no, if there's trucks coming in and out, he's doing food delivery from here. Uh, uh, strange things, I gotta be as funny as he is, strange things about him.
Well, that's, that's, that's what's left, this shule doesn't need.
Let me ask a question, where, where does business activity be happening?
No business, no business activity.
So what, just, for illustrative purposes, what will be stored here?
Close.
Uh, April. Drink a glass of champagne, Brian.
I, I, I have a storage building on property, I was, and in the winter, I put my pocket there.
Okay, if your most there on Google.
Uh.
The storage area is still taxable, huh?
Yeah, that's still active.
In here.
No, he, he said it will not be used for active business things, it's going to be just.
So let's, let's dispel the mystery, what will be stored?
The main roof property, this stores this whole, uh.
Yeah, it looks like there's something there now, it's like a lot of yard or something. We're not saying no, we just want to know what we're dealing with. Transparency.
The owner is someone by the name of Aaron Becker, he owns the property now, he's storing some of his belongings in there, the shule did not need that much space, so this space is just, he's maintaining.
Everything that's in there now is, is, uh, uh.
So I'm going to drop it, the thing I would suggest is the house next door, this can be occupied, appears to be, who are not citizens in the United States, and there's a lot of little children running around, which is just fine, I would suggest you have a fence, go all the way from the back of the property, all the way to the front, so that some of those kids, those little children, there's a lot of them in the picture, don't run across the new gravel driveway and get hit, now, where your grave is. Where's your driveway? Now, house is right there, you need a fence.
The house.
It exists anywhere.
I know, that doesn't go all the way up.
I'm just, well, suggested, that we've got lots, little kindle lot, right around here, and that, 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 he's here, because if you have a guy who's late to visit, he goes to zoom, and the little pace chase into the thing.
Agreed.
Okay. We're back, we're back together in the room. Mr. Stern, you're asking for, uh, for another round, from where do you go?
What do you think, the applicant would agree to test the dwelling, so that there's no interaction between.
There's a fence, right? That's about twenty feet from the road, go down a little bit, here's the fence, here's the road, now, just go down a little bit, there, the kindle lot, see it now, one, two, three, four, five. I'm just saying, I'm just suggesting, one at a time, Brian, we need a record, just say what you can, but on the record, what?
They're, you're exactly, you're explaining, you're viewing pictures of the kindle lot there, uh, but the applicant is agreeing.
Mr. Stern.
To provide fencing to the satisfaction of the board engineer, to separate the area where the kindle lot lays, from the area that the shule uses for parking, because it has a very valid point, that somehow, like, for many, uh.
And the other thing that you have on record, that, I mean, this technical, who owns all the surrounding properties, I think he's using it for storage, but it's not going to be active, uh, trucks, uh, be coming in and out all day, that would come on a different property.
Correct.
If you keep that stored, I don't care, as long as it doesn't interfere with the parking, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
What is the, uh, plans, or, or, or?
Well, so, the question, I don't understand the question, I'm sorry.
The property, the house, uh, the area.
I see, uh, waiting plans, uh, this is the building up, I think, it's not, uh.
What improvements do you make, can you fix up the building?
This, the, the, this is really, this is really just a temporary solution, as I indicated earlier, this is a temporary solution, they really hope to build a beautiful building at some point in the near future, and that's why they're trying to keep the costs down on this building at this point in time.
And, 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 and.
Usually, most of the shuls that, that I come before the board, will be gone, and then about two, the chairman can attest, about two to three years later, they backfill those quarters, they raise the funds, and they do come back and really, and really build a beautiful building.
If you have a shule, on, you know, just, you're not there.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
We'll see you, shule.
Yes. Yeah, sure.
Anything else on the report, if you're on agree with, sidewalks, you have sidewalks there?
Fine.
Sidewalks proposed. Would you say for the record, did you say?
Sidewalk is being proposed, and we'll put the sidewalk just on the property, so it'll be available, it'll go along the property line, but on our property, so we don't need counting for.
Is that okay, near the time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions, any board members?
Brian, you have, because everything else is on the record.
Okay. I would open up to the public, anywhere the public would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Seeing none, we close the public, I would ask for motion of this application.
I'll make a motion, uh, the only condition being we could extend the four-foot fence to the road, the sidewalk, of suggestions.
Say something, if you're, if you're, you can't go over the road, you can't, you can't.
I'm not asking, I'm saying whatever.
Yeah, you can't testify. I don't need this, so.
So, Brian, you just say.
Right, they can testify.
Say it, and, and try to speak.
Fence, fence will be provided, uh, in proximity of the, uh, Ridge Avenue, but far enough back so that it doesn't create any, uh, traffic problems, and, and we'll do that, uh, in the most practicable way.
Further review of the board engineer. I think you should have a attorney. There, you got that, right? You're not hearing something else, okay, you're not hearing something else?
Would that a compliment, or a thing?
That was a compliment.
He's an attorney, so I won't be a compliment.
Professional courtesy.
This is, this is, uh, sidewalks, and that's, that's.
Please amend my motion.
No, I'm not, we didn't.
Oh, add to it.
The sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
And the storages will be not active.
Storage will not be used for.
Active business.
Active business purposes.
Sidewalk on the, on the property.
Sidewalk, and no, no on sheet parking.
Yes.
There, you got that?
Mr. Stern makes motion, Mr. Weinstein, and you have the motion call?
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, next, the, the next application, chairman, I would like, uh.
You would.
This is my statement, I have a request of board members, please, we, there is possible all applications, we make the house, making sure. We make the house, make the shul, let everybody make a simple, put it there. Let's deal with it, and we ask for a variance, or give a variance. If you need parking, sure, the rest is, unless you want to be alone.
In other words, honesty is the best policy.
That's right.
I think we try to work with you guys. We did have, just for the representation we have, the better solution, we can't play hide the ball, then...
I don't think he had...
That wasn't the intention.
I don't think he was either, but there have been times when they've tried to hide the ball, and we haven't played it active. We forgot it's really going on before we can ask it. So I appreciate you guys being proactive, coaching your clients to just work with us more.
Absolutely. Fair request. So noted.
No yelling at the board?
Stand up.
Stand up. That's part of it.
Third application, Chairman, SB 2343. Congregation for Uti La La, minor site, new approval, art of addition.
Yes. Yes, so the board is aware, the applicant is voluntarily on the back to provide additional parking. Now, you have any comments? We have a very brief letter, which notes that the last one might be consolidated, which means that on consolidation, city not building, the resident assets is now, according to eighteen, subsection eighteen hundred and five, permanent buffer being required. We know that everything is from our point of view, that show on the plate is the orderly property, my, actually, my, uh...
That's correct. Good evening. Marion Warrenstein, on behalf of congregation, it's actually Chorobun's feeling, Terry, but...
So I'm getting better.
What? Right, so this is full transparency. I know it's hard for the board members to believe this, but this applicant, this shul, realized that they do not have enough parking. And therefore, they acquired the parcel next door. And in all truth, there is nothing on the slot besides a shul, and this is a new parking lot. And that is going, and they're gonna consolidate the two lots into one. There is nothing more than that. There's a shul upstairs. The basement is actually currently unfinished. I believe there's a big foot that is currently existing in that basement. That's it. There's no warehouse, there's no storage, there's no residences. I know, it is hard to believe. It should be the model, I think, for all applications, but we are really here this evening for the simple reason to add parking to a shul that badly needed parking.
Is there a plan to finish the basement? Is there a plan to finish the basement?
Not in the imminent future.
Okay, so the parking lot has nothing to do with the basement?
Parking lot has nothing to do with the basement. That's why I was pointing out that the basement is empty. There is no synchro there. There is no plan for a synchro. This is really just that this shul realized that they don't have enough parking for their car against the park, and that's why they're making the parking lot. Like I said, it really should be the model application.
Are you creating an issue there?
Well, we have to get Brian's word, and then Brian's gonna tell us.
My name is Brian Moner Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer, professional planner. Might I tell you a question?
No.
Oh, oh. There's an existing ground parking area in that shul, as Terry indicated. They needed, thanks for parking, and spent most of the shul. They were proactive. They bought the lawn as a ground parking area. We're just asking to pay. They brought the application. They probably just tried to figure out how we can get to do this without having to come to the board. And I think potentially you could. Terry indicates a big report, which is why you're here, I think, that we need a variance for the permanent buffer. And this seems to be the night that I disagree with Terry on variances. The ordinance says, permanent buffer, property adjacent residential, if the site needs 20 foot, then there are no buffer requirements. If 20 feet is invaded, then requirements indicated in number three shall be put in place. So to me, it says, you do what's in three. You know, we really do what's in three, land, pay, and so. But again, Terry says we need a variance. I'm not gonna give testimony indicating why we should have a variance. Looking at his report, he indicates, and he does indicate that they don't need any real hardware. It's not black and white. It's dark red. And yes. So in justification for the variance, it has, he goes to the hand, and Terry says, we need him. He looked at this statement in the national plan of 2017, I think, seven, encourage development and redevelopment based on our plan for the world, and certainly might as well, smart development, provide more parking so that people can park. This is on Miller Road, which is a county road. It's just north of Charataldo, which is an area that the parking will be a benefit to the congregation and, as I say, the municipal end use law in the AC curriculum fifty-five, two, and the X. It's to encourage this lack of guide, appropriate use of development of all angles of state, no matter what, from a health, safety, more general welfare, this certainly does that. And it's a C2 variance, and the benefits, literally, I think, there's only benefits. Marion indicates all shuls to do this. If the Campbell's do this, fortunately, there's one question, and he did the right thing.
How many congregants do they have now, families?
About sixteen.
And how many practice spots do they have currently?
Seventeen.
And they're proposing how many additional ones?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five additional.
Thirty-five additional? Do you feel that would be sufficient to their needs at this time?
Yes. Basically, one for each congregation.
I'm very familiar with this application. So right off my house, I see right now what's going on, that every single night, every day, there's overfloor parking on Miller Road. And especially in the morning times, it's a disaster, what's going on with the overfloor parking and everything. It's, I agree, it's something that's very needed.
Thank you.
Anybody from the left, you heard us. There you go. Fitzcarraro. Please state your name.
Fitzcarraro.
Please.
C-A-R-R-A-O.
Do you swear, please, right again? Do you swear affirm that someone gave you this work with your vote?
I do.
Please proceed. Does she speak also, just to...
No, I don't. No, I'm just saying that I'm hoping that, you know, that they release the parking over there, and makes it easier, because that's a heavy intersection. And I wanted to make note that on the corner there, they put a four-way stop sign, which is like ridiculous if you ever drive by there. It's like people just don't know where to go on Miller. I agree, it's like nuts. You know what I mean? I've seen more accidents there around the corner. Like, banging, you know, there's another one, and people going into houses or whatever. But I'm just saying that I'm glad that they're alleviating the traffic on the street, because on that road, it's caused double parking, and it's just a nightmare coming down there. You can't see it visual. But one thing I want to know, are they gonna leave the cars there at night, I guess, on Friday night to Saturday? Or the streets are taken, right?
Right.
All right. But I just wanted to make note of that stop sign, if they could put a regular light there, rather than this, in the four-way stop sign. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I make a recommendation, can't I?
Yeah.
Can you make a reminder? All right. All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is anybody else calling back to hear this, or is it closed? Ask for motion on this application. I'll make a motion to the board. Mr. Moore, move. Mr. Moore, for a second.
Call Mr. Dorby. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Brian?
Yes.
Are you hearing any other petitions?
Yes.
Everything else, I think? Are you going to question, Brian?
Yes. And Oak Street, four.
There's an extension request for you.
Yeah. They mind something, and I'm behind you. You have to be responsible.
Yes, swear affirm, that's what I need for this work.
I do. Brian Moner Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer, professional planner. This is a mine subdivision application on Ocean Avenue. The applicant has some issues with the title on the property, so he's not able to close on it at this point. So he's asking for a one-year extension to give him time to resolve that, so he can close. No, it's title issues. The title company digs up something, you figure it out. Takes a little time, won't, yeah, hopefully, it matters to title, because then it'll get done quickly, but sometimes they don't. What's that?
How long has he been working on the decision with the title?
Since he got his approval.
When was that?
The original approval was... December eleventh, 2017.
So it's already two years, and they didn't resolve anything? A year and a half?
Well, it's a year and a half.
Does he feel like it would be resolved in a year, or does it take longer to happen then?
He feels a year, but he would turn to it. The board was in a particularly kind mood.
Well, typically, with this type of situation, how long would you say it takes?
A year should be fine.
A year should be fine?
Yes.
What title is she, makes you work for that title, I can't imagine.
What's Madison, no, it's a... No, I'm not sure what title company is, but it's something with the property where he can't close on one, because somebody's gotta do something. So it's something he can't close on at this point. Is it contract purchase, or is it contract that's not a...
We have a motion to grant the extension for you.
Mr. Dorby?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes.
Mr. Lyer?
Yes.
And Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Last three applications, Chairman, or call, Oak Street and Streamers. I think mine's here, for all three.
Yes.
Take order, I guess, first one would be SB twenty-four oh nine, eight zero.
Sorry, I missed it. Before we get into this, can I just say something about this Oak Street? So I know a few years ago, when the Oak Street was finalized, board made a decision that we should hear all these administrative findings, minor subdivisions, even though there's actually nothing that goes by it, and we're all administrative. And then we done administratively. And I remember there was one board member in particular who was very, who was very strong, you know, for chair everyone. I just, I thought that if the board members maybe want to reconsider this, because as long as we like sitting here, it's just an administrative thing, and if you done Terry's office, it's really no reason for us to hear this.
I think the intention was, we'll put them on the board so that the board members got them, and they could look at them if they had any questions.
I understand. I remember there was one board member in particular who was very strong about the board chair.
I remember.
Right. And we have had these in a while, but some nights they were pent on them on the agenda, and there was actually no reason to listen to them.
Fortunately, I think we got a proposal.
Yes. These are, these are close to the end.
Are we almost done?
Oh, yes, we are almost done.
Because otherwise, I would say the board, we could say this whole thing about the market. So basically, Brian?
Well, are there any variances on the... No variances. And the reports are all that. They're all conforming applications, following rules, and we agree all the comments that Terry made.
I think the whole idea behind it was to make sure they get scrutinized, and to keep everybody honest, and to make sure that they truly were fully conforming.
Well, and it was a board member that wanted to know they were coming up, so he could look at them, and he could scrutinize.
And I think it's sufficient for tonight's purposes. If you make that representation of five, six, and seven, I think the board can administratively approve them.
Yes.
So they're all conforming, all this factory, and we'll look at them. So I think that's all we have to do with that one.
Are you agreeing with me?
Yes.
Do you want me to present your question?
I forget what, I'll prepare it.
All right, well, you're...
Or I'll prepare whatever it is that we could party with, or something like that. Yes, they roll with everything.
Can we do rules together? Mr. Stern? Okay. Just before we do it, so what are we doing then, or what would have been?
Well, these are...
What are you asking? This is my education.
We're really not asking for anything. We have the right to administrative approval of it for the ordinance. It's on the agenda so that all the board members know this is going on, so you don't get surprised by the application. So there's gonna be a resolution saying it was administratively approved, and the board members will nod at their heads.
There was talk of having this done by a subcommittee of the board. And then, but the board decided that it was a whole board within the subcommittee.
It's basically just to make, just to double check that there's no variances.
By analogy, in some towns, you can have a minor subdivision that does not require notice. It can be done administratively by, in town hall.
But we don't do that.
Never goes to the board. We don't have that here, but this is that type of circumstance. But for whatever reason, it was decided to bring them out and scrutinize, and put them in the light. And now we're running out of them.
If administratively, they find some issue, they go, we send it back down to... They check over any of the subcommittees.
Okay. Great. So last motion, so we'll... On all three, I have a very...
All right. For all three applications, SB twenty-four oh nine, twenty-four one zero, twenty-four one one, roll call, Mr. Dorby.
Yes.
Do us the login.
Mr. Stern? Yes.
Mr. Plank?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
And Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
For all three applications, right?
Thank you. Approval of minutes, motion, some move on.
Second.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
Approval bills, move second, on favor.
Aye.
Want to speak? So Ally wants us to leave everything in piles right here. Oh, on the three. Are we not?
We have the boxes.
No, we manned first, we called. Have we not this?
Yeah, right, right. So there's all sorts of stuff to be done here. And we have, Ally told me that she had big schools, they're resuming schedule.
They get that large school.
Why does it seem like you're ready to get it out?
There's something, something we may want to do. I don't know, it's amazing. We just have to get through it. Actually, I don't miss, we all have to get through it. Maybe it's Ally that does it.
No.
Terry, you think Abby's got a good pocket?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a good chance. This was a light event, unfortunately.
But, uh...
I don't know about this.
Who's my...
No. You know, I mean, come on, back in today, we had problems. Was it... It's been added to the certain number of problems, wasn't very long. He had to wait.
Or...
Right.
It's first, every time you want.
It's not very worried.
Yes.
That's pretty reasonable.
I know, I know, it's like, my name, like, they always tell me.
All right.